With our meeting of the Southwest Looking Board of Education to order. It is 7:01 PM on October 22nd. We'd like to recognize all of our visitors, both here and online. Please join me, Stan, join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
This is Watkins Middle School's leadership class with Mr. Westbrook saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
On the Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, ever and ever.
All right, Mr. Jones, we call the roll, please.
Mrs. Moore.
Here.
Mrs. Spindler.
Here.
Mr. Vence.
Here.
Mr. Zani.
Mrs. Engel.
Here, we have a quorum, we can continue. We have one request for public participation. Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Will please give us your name, your address, and any group affiliation?
Okay.
And you'll have five minutes to talk. Mr. Jones will keep track of the time.
All right.
And he'll give you kind of a one-minute warning, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah?
My name is Mark Evans. My address is 91 Old North Church Road, Etna, Ohio. Resident, but also president of New England Acre Civic Association. I'm here to discuss the higher density development that's being proposed in Etna Township. I noticed on your agenda, you're going to be addressing that a little bit later. We've been in negotiations, our attorney, with the builder in township over the last month. And the builder has not budged one bit on the density at all. I feel that the township isn't concerned about the density either, based on my conversations with Mr. Carlisle. And the proposed development is a PMED, planned mixed-use development. What the area is currently zoned as is a plain residential conservation district. Nobody has a problem with that being developed there. Under my calculations, I estimate approximately 147 to 148 lots could be developed on that land. I asked Etna zoning for their estimate, and Mr. Singleton got back to me today. And he estimated 85 to 95 lots. I believe his is incorrect, but it's even lower than mine. What Polte is proposing is 365. I think if the area is developed like that, it's going to overwhelm the schools. Especially if financing isn't there to accommodate all the extra expenses, teachers, and students that will be directed towards the schools. The developers indicated that parts of the development are geared towards empty nesters and retirees that won't have children. However, I'm skeptical of that because they do have other developments in New Albany and Westerville, 455 and up, and they actually have a center, bocce ball, where it seems like that is developed. Here is just small houses, small lots they're trying to shove in. There's other developments, JBW off of 310. I believe it is already zoned PWD. But that was, I believe, with elderly and senior citizens in that area. Now they're switching to single-family homes. That's going to be another directing possible large mom students to the district. And if this is the plan for the area, I think the township should be working closely with the school board about this change in density. Especially if it goes against the comprehensive plan and all that, which I'm assuming when you guys built the new high school and schools, you guys took into account. Now they want to change it. So I just really hope that you guys start communicating with the township and the township review in this matter, and to ensure that, you know, our community can sustain a good school financially for the entire, you know, betterment of the community. That's all I have. Thank you.
I just have one quick follow-up. I was at that meeting yesterday, and Polte seemed to express an extreme desire to work with your organization. So I'm assuming that the township and Polte has reached out to you today to continue the negotiations?
They have not. Polte left there without communicating with us. I reached out to them, to three of their individuals, today, one yesterday. I still have not heard anything. The reason for their tabling of the public meeting yesterday was to further negotiate with us. And they have not reached out. So I'm a bit concerned about that. And our public meeting is rescheduled for the 28th. So hopefully I hear from them, but again, the communication from the township is lacking sometimes when I reach out to them, and now with Polte. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Please come back and keep us informed. Appreciate it.
I will, thank you.
All right. Item F, adoption of agenda. We need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Jones.
Mr. Vence.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Mrs. Engel.
Yes. That motion passes. We have a presentation. We have the Students of the Quarter video. Dr. Morris going to do that.
So since we weren't able to have our typical Student of the Quarter ceremony, we did go surprise the kids and the staff of the quarters in their classroom. And what we did was just put together a video so that we could at least highlight those students, though they couldn't be here in person. So much fun.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So again, there was so much going on. Video would be very lengthy since the last time. I did forget to mention the BoD cafeteria ladies have also come out and explored their kitchen. They're really excited about things too, so.
I think I also saw that some PTO was there as well.
Yes, I forgot that. They were off this week to tour the BoD. I actually took them to three BoD buildings, and they seem to enjoy their trip.
Thank you for sharing.
Thanks. Thank you. It's looking wonderful. It really is. All right, request to speak on agenda items. Teamsters Local 413, Southwest Looking Education Association. Approval of minutes. We need a motion to approve the September 17 regular meeting minutes.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Jones.
Mr. Vence.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes. That motion passes. We have a financial report. We need a motion to approve of the financial report, and then we can discuss. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Jones.
According to the, is exact as Sunday for the month, and September 30, 2020. As you see, we have estimates this month. We're moving forward. It's hard to tell a lot from the first month of estimates. First two months are actual. September is actually, but at this point, we're about $270,000 ahead where we're anticipating maybe this time. So that's a good thing. We have news up and the expansion to down, so, you know, other than that, there's nothing real exciting. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have. Again, it's very early, and I was anxious to see what October intact receipts come in. With a delay, or July is what is large usual, so it should come in October. So that's what I'm hoping happens. We'll know here, I think, next week.
All right.
Be glad to answer any questions you have.
All right. Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Vence.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes. That motion passes. We have items 6A through I, no, A through L, sorry. The Personnel Consent Calendar.
Motion to approve 6A through L.
Second. Any discussion?
I was curious, what is K?
Yeah, that's a.
Uh, it's just a, what's next? It shouldn't have been on there.
Okay. It's a mystery.
No, it's A through K.
Okay.
All right.
All right. So amend that motion and correct it and so on and so forth. All right. Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Vence.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes. That motion passes. Quite a few under business items. Let's start with the discussion on the OFCC master plan.
So before we start, are you going to?
Yeah, I can go start Zooming.
Okay. Do you want to share, Rick, with who's joining us? Joining us so they know too?
Are we bringing in Garmin?
Yeah, Garmin always comes in. Eric and plus that Kurt, I think they're two. Eric's coming in now.
Sure can.
Should turn it up a little bit. Okay. Oh, everything muted.
Very good. Technical difficulties. I'll go ahead and start.
Yeah.
Okay. And I would thank Eric and Kurt, I'm not sure if they can hear me, for joining us. I asked them to be here tonight because I wanted to talk about Potassola Elementary. So I wanted to make sure that all parties were here, in case the board had any, you know, questions that they would want to answer. So, you know, as the excitement grows and kind of how Bob shared in those videos for these new buildings, I just couldn't wrap my mind around continuing without having a discussion with the board. We're good? Okay. Continuing without having a discussion with the board to talk about Potassola. So when you look at the history of Potassola Elementary, we have previously put $4 million into renovations in that building. We are now planning on putting another $11 million into Potassola as the renovations. So we could continue to do so, which would probably mean we would continue over time as the building gets older and older, and it's already very old, continue to dump more and more money into it, or we could look at the idea of taking the $11 million allocated by the state and with our funds and putting that into a new Potassola Elementary instead of renovating the old one. So we, and Rick's obviously going to speak to the financial aspect here in a second, but we have the money where we would not have to go back to the voters. We could give our kids and our community a nice new building, as we're seeing with Watkins Intermediate and the high school, at no additional cost to anyone. I think that we should heavily consider this option as I'm concerned with the age of Potassola and the amount of money that it's going to require over time. But eventually, we're going to hit a point where we've spent as much money as it would have cost us to build a brand-new building for our kids on a building that's, I don't know sustainability, how long, you know, it will be here for. So I wanted to bring that to the board's attention. I think it's worthy of having a conversation to see how everyone feels. You know, Rick has been working on the financial component, so he can share some of that. If you're interested, you know, Garmin and Miller can jump in as well with additional items or questions you might have, and myself. So I kind of wanted to throw that there for a conversation.
I think you start a little bit fast. So we did like a, you know, Bob and Kurt or Eric, either one, as we did a little function called POR, per number of requirements, to kind of see what we want in the building. That's kind of the first step, you know, first step in looking at what. And then from there, our goal was to be able to put together estimates for the building. So I'll have to write down where I'll tell them that. Somewhere around 22, 23 million dollars. So with the states of, yeah, we need about 23. With the states 11 million, if we can come up with 13 million or 12 million, so it's probably our 12 million, we'll be able to build a brand-new building, again, without raising taxes for our local community. This will be funded through our COPS issuance, if somebody did fund a new athletic building. I had a meeting with, and then, and this Dr. Perkins was part of that meeting with our municipal advisor, looking at the possibility of a COPS issuance, if we can do it. So it's, what I've asked for was basically 14 million, so 12 million for past, 2 million for current. Over 25 years, we would still have approximately $200,000 to $300,000 left in our PI fund. Just still buy school buses. And plus, we have the money coming in from the JAB and other things if we need to buy school buses. So, and the estimates they use is $1.9 billion will be flexed from PI. That doesn't include any growth. It grows every year with new destruction.
Right.
They have planning growth in there. That means there's more wiggle room as it gets through. So we do have the ability as school issues to issue the debt, to have the money paid back from our permanent improvement levy, and be able to have the funds to build a brand-new building.
We'd pay it back over 25 years?
25 years. 20 years, we do 20 years, but it really took it down like 150,000, it's a tiger. And we can still entertain that up the board. It did 20, 25, and 30. You know, the 20 years, rec numbers, interest was like 5 million. And then like, for 25 years, it was like 7 million interest. And for 30 years, it's like $10 million interest. So just trying to find that balance, and at 25, kind of felt like it's a good number, and it left us some money left over to still continue to buy school buses from the permanent improvement levy, at least a couple.
And we'll have, we'll have money for other improvements.
Yes, it'll be, yes, it'll be still some tighter, yeah, it'll be tighter, 200,000. But there's still, with that 200,000, we can do future issuance if we need to. Once all our buildings are renovated, then we have that maintenance fund that we're putting $315,000 a year in for 23 years to maintain our brand-new buildings.
Right.
So we should not need PI for that, to maintain the buildings. It'd be, the road and everything, that should be covered by that money, you know, for at least, you know, a few years. And then, you know, we still have two more COPS out, you know, the COPS out and one tan out. And as those get paid off, more money gets freed up. So long-term, I think it's a good option for the school industry. Is there anything you want to show Kurt or Eric or anything?
Yeah, this is Kurt. Good evening, everybody.
Hey, Kurt.
I can, I can share my screen if you want to look at any of the, of the POR that you mentioned, Rick, and some of the numbers that you shared.
Yeah. Remember how I did it?
Okay, let me see if I can, let me see if I can do this.
You just got to give him the ability to.
Yeah, I said share multiple, let's see what happens there. I'll try it first.
And we do have, we do have Wayne Coleman on the line also. Wayne, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can see.
Okay. So this is the master plan that Rick mentioned that we've been working on for the last couple of years. And this, this column is the Potassola building. So what's being planned for is grades PK through three. Again, this is the master plan. We know the PK or the preschool is in the other building, but this is what the master plan says. 450. but this is what the master plan says, four hundred and fifty-nine students. And, um, when you get down to all of the, all through the calculations of number of square feet, square feet per student, and all that type of thing, um, the grand total for the, you know, the task for the building for the renovation is the eleven million, one hundred and eighty thousand. If everybody can, if everybody can see that.
Yeah. See that.
Okay, so that's what, that's what we've, uh, been working on, you know, as part of the master plan for the last couple of years. And then, uh, when, uh, when Dr. Perkins asked us to, uh, look into that, um, and Wayne really does a lot of this work, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna see if I can share my other screen and, uh, go to the, uh, program of requirements that, um, that Rick had mentioned. And can everybody see that now?
Yes.
Yes.
So what, can everybody see it?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so, um, what this document is, is, uh, is the same worksheet that we use, um, for every project, but it's, uh, you enter the grade configuration, enter the student enrollment. All of these numbers are recalculated by, um, by the OFCC spreadsheet. And, um, we, uh, we, we had worked through a, uh, uh, again, a preliminary plan with number of classrooms and that type of thing, um, a, a couple of weeks ago, um, we met and went through this. And so what we, what we came up with is, again, uh, the first, first time going through this, but we're allowed the fifty-five thousands square feet, fifty-five, seven, seventy-one. And what we have programmed, again, preliminary, is a hundred and sixty-nine, so that's, or I'm sorry, sixty-nine thousand. So that is about thirteen thousand over what the base OFCC number would be, if that makes sense. And then, um, you all, I'm sure, are familiar with the term L F Is. So any of that, um, square footage, overage in the OFCC, um, procedures is considered an L F I. So I can, I can, uh, I can go through that with you in a little more detail if you like. This way going for this next tab, for example, this is where we start to look at the academic core, the number of classrooms. So we had, um, we had calculated, we had determined that we would need six kindergarten classrooms. Uh, we're required to have restrooms for each one of those kindergarten classrooms, and then eighteen classrooms at nine hundred square feet. And we also put it in a science or computer lab, two teacher prep areas, four restrooms, uh, two new instructional material storage rooms, four small group rooms. So that's, that's a real quick summary of probably about an hour's worth of discussion of how many, how many of those spaces we thought we need. And then the next tab is the special education, and again, we went through that discussion. Um, we went through the administration, you know, every space in the building is calculated on these, on these tabs. And I didn't, I didn't go through this for hours if you like, or I can.
Oh, thanks.
Okay.
I can do ones at least if you like.
Yes, that's great.
Vision workshop.
Okay, so let me, uh, let me share another, another sheet for you. And this is, um, and I'm going to let Wayne do the talking, he's the, he's the one that really puts all this together, but, um, so considering the, the L F Is in addition to the, in addition to the square footage, um, that we talked about on the other sheet, um, this is some of the material upgrades that, um, we talked through. So again, starting with the OFCC numbers, four fifty-nine and the, uh, total square footage and all those kind of things are calculated from that previous P O R sheets. Um, but then we looked at, um, items that are, uh, often included as a material upgrade. So, um, you know, at the four or five and high school, we've got some terrazzo in our, in our main corridor and in our student dining. So these numbers are pulled from the P O R, the previous sheet that I showed you. And we're, um, estimating that to be about twenty-seven dollars a square foot, that's the grand total. And then what we, Wayne does all this ahead of time, and then when we talk about it, we either say, put a one in that yes, we want to do it, or two, that we're not. We look at, um, flooring in the main corridor upgraded, um, secondary corridor options. We look at classroom flooring, technology, uh, HVAC systems, and other material upgrades. Again, like he did on the new buildings, the rubber playground surface, brick, slope metal roof, et cetera, et cetera. So one thing that's important to note, and hopefully you can see this with our, with our pictures on the side, but, um, we get into OFCC projects, sometimes things are able to be co-funded if the budget allows. That's these number, that's these, this text that's in green. In red, um, that's something that's never a co-funded item. So it's just something to, uh, to keep note of. And, uh, so just this first one again, terrazzo in main floors, OFCC is, will not co-fund terrazzo. That's just one of their rules. So, uh, you mean to go and, uh?
No.
For me to go on that?
No, that's good.
Okay.
And, and one of the reasons we did this exercise was to see how much would the building cost? Is it something that we could reasonably afford? And, you know, what were we looking at finance-wise before even coming to the board? Um, to see what you would think about consideration of this idea.
There's the, the total there, about eleven point five million dollars of our own L F I. In addition to what was included upon issue. We rounded at twelve, make sure there's a little room for contingency and so forth. So that's how we got to that number, that's how we determined to work with our municipal advisor in terms of what you can afford. If you want, if you as a board want to do this. The other part of this is there's two co-owners, there's us and then there's the state. The state too also has to agree, make this change. And there's no guarantee that will happen. But the good thing is there's a better chance that they don't have to put any more money in. And right now in this scenario, we are not asking them to put any more money in. We're asking them to spend what they already planned on spending, and we as a school issue will pick up the other share as co-fund.
Does it help that we had a variance to do what we're doing now anyway?
Uh, I don't know, I mean, we just, we had a conversation with them last week, late last, and basically there is some, basically they're, they're not against the idea, but ultimately people we talked to are not the ones to file, make decision. That would be the controlling board and the, what is it, the OFCC commissioner or something. So, you know, as people above them, that we talk about planning, which is the ones who will start the process. So they're not against the idea, and, and again, it comes back to if we believe they're not putting money or there's a better chance it'll pass. Okay.
So just a couple of things to add, um, you know, from, from that end of things, you know, we'll work on regardless of, uh, you know, unless tonight you absolutely aren't interested in entertaining the idea, but if we're, if it's on the table, then we'll work to do a resolution to present to the state, um, so they can consider what we're putting on the table. I also think that we need to, um, at, at a minimum, do some sort of survey to our community. Um, you know, we, the voters did vote for the renovation of Potasko, um, not a new building, so I think we should, um, share the information with them as well. Um, maybe gain some feedback, um, from those that voted to, uh, support the current plan. So I would also, um, suggest doing something on that order. Um, so that's just a couple of things.
I, I just, I just want to confirm, when this work was being done, the goal was to create a school that was on target, on par, basically with the four or five building? I mean, we're not, we're not skimping just so we can make the financial aspect of it, is that correct?
It's a similar, definitely a similar building, it is going to be a little smaller.
No, no, sure, sure.
Size or whatever, but, um, definitely a similar, we, um, had talked about that.
Same thing, G-Bomb, looking for, looking for, looking for roofs.
Yeah, okay.
Terrazzo in the main, these are upgrades we chose in the four or five.
Okay, perfect.
And we didn't skip one, that's for sure.
Okay, that's.
We feel like, we feel like we should do it.
Do it right. Correct, okay, that's what I just wanted to make sure that we weren't trying to, you know.
No.
Keep cost a penny.
This is, there's also like, like over a million dollars there for just the land itself, because we don't know what to expect. Parking lots, driveways, there's a lot of traffic issues in Potasko.
There's like, it would be, yeah, I mean, the traffic issue in Potasko is if we could find a way to figure that out, it'd be amazing, and I know that neighborhood would probably be thankful.
Do you rest in the conceptual drawings or two or?
Um, I don't know, I would like to see probably more than a survey. I, I know we're in COVID times, but I would like to see some sort of opportunity for there to be a public meeting, whether or not people come, I don't know. But I would like to certainly, because it is deviating from what originally was stated, I would like to see a bona fide public meeting. With that said, I will also say that I am very much inclined to go along with this. To me, over the long run, it makes a lot more financial sense to do this than to keep throwing money into a building that's a hundred years old. Um, I mean, we've all witnessed what happens when we do that, um, just not too long ago. So, um, I'm definitely inclined to go along with this, and I, for me personally, I don't know that it's too early to see. So for preliminary drawings, in fact, I think if there was a public meeting, I would think that would probably be something that the public would want to, to see. Um, the only other things running through my head that I had questions about with the present building being a historic site, are there any sort of legalities that we have to consider in that regard?
Eric, do you want to answer that one for us?
Yeah, I checked in with the Ohio History Connection who oversees that, and they said that, uh, if it's all local money, which this would be to pay for the demolition, then there are no, uh, reviews that are needed. Uh, it's only whenever a, uh, there's state funding or federal funding for the specific demolition piece that you would need, uh, a review of it. So, yeah, with you paying this all with L F I for the demolition, uh, there's no issues with, uh, tearing it down.
Okay, and then my other question, would it be cost prohibited to perhaps preserve some of the historical elements of that building, like the bell tower?
We can certainly look at, uh, reusing pieces, uh, if nothing else, we could replicate. We do, we've done that quite often. Um, but we could also, uh, look at original pieces and just check structural integrity, um, and where possible, we could reuse pieces. Um, I know there's, uh, probably some sentiment to try to, uh, mirror the, the original building in some way, or at least, uh, pay homage to that design, so we would certainly do that. And looks like Kurt's pulled up an example for you. We at least have looked at site plans to make sure the building would fit okay and look at how circulation would work. Um, so you can see, this is just one option. We, there's a number of options of how the building could, uh, fit in there until we get further into the, the design. It's kind of a moving shape right now, but this represents a building of the size, the sev, about seventy thousand square feet. Uh, there would be a multi-story component probably up front. Um, so you can see it fits on the site, we can get all the, uh, pieces upon the site that are needed. We also are able to have, uh, two areas to keep the buses separated from air drop-off, which is important for safety. So, uh, we're able to make it work.
Okay, and then timeline-wise, how does this impact the present plan?
So, um, it will take longer to design a new building than the renovation, um, just a little bit longer, but more importantly, construction-wise, it's going to take longer construction-wise. So, uh, the plan was to start construction in June of twenty twenty-two. Uh, that's, and the timing of that has to do with the, all the other pieces that are in place with getting the middle school ready and moving students out of there to have swing space. Um, so that's what's driving that June twenty twenty-two of when the construction will start. Um, Kirkersville will take about a year, so you'd be ready the following fall of twenty twenty-three. This will probably extend a few months after, so this would be more probably like a, uh, later move-in like you're doing with the four or five now.
Okay.
Really just delay the demolition of the middle school. Since they're last year projects and it's just, the passing students could stay in the middle school the extra six months. And just delay the demolition of the building.
Okay. So with the June of twenty twenty-two, would that mean the beginning of the demolition of the building? Or the construction of the new building?
Uh, they would probably start with the demolition of the building. Um, the painting of that, we would have to work with Robinson, but most likely they'd start with tearing that down.
Okay.
But am I correct in thinking that all of that depends on when we can get, uh, the project in front of the OFCC board and, uh, for their approval?
Yeah.
And they have like tight timelines?
Yeah, um, from talking a little bit with OFCC, um, if everything, uh, falls in place, if, if you bring it up for a vote in November, they, um, I think the final approval from them is looking to be like February timeframe for the final, um, commission that they need to take that in front of. Um, but from our perspective, um, if you voted as a board in support of doing this and taking it to OFCC, we would start the process right then, realizing there's a little bit of risk. But, uh, that keeps, that allows us to stay on schedule basically.
Because I kind of put Potasko renovation hold until this decision is made, so that I'll spend time storing that, then turn around and start over with credibility potential, so that's why this decision, but again, the board potentially could even make a decision by November, that's November meeting, so that we can get it to OFCC right after the meeting and they can start their process. That's what you chose.
Would that give us enough time to have a meeting?
I mean, I think we can schedule a meeting.
It's like three weeks, so we got to, something we have to do quickly on it.
We could put something out tomorrow if the board wants to select a date and.
Yeah.
No reason we can't do that.
Even if we, if we can't do it in person, at least if we had a Zoom or something.
It's up to you.
But I prefer in person, but I don't know, you know, if we had a hundred people come, I don't know where we would put a hundred people.
Well, I, I think we should do, if we're going to help hold a meeting, I think we do it in person. And I think if we do it, we, yeah, either do it in the gym or we do it in maybe a long timeframe. So, you know, people that want to come at four o'clock can come at four o'clock, and we're going to limit that number just to however many.
Like rolling presentations on every half hour, every twenty minutes from four to seven.
Yep.
And, uh?
In order to only have ten.
Come on the hour or the half hour so that we can limit the number of people, and you could do that in the high school cafeteria even.
Yeah, that's a good place.
All right, I like it.
Guess there's no opposition from, from the board in this, intending to move forward with the resolution. You probably, I don't know if you want to do it tonight, also set up a date for a special meeting, do that?
I think we should do that if we're, so we can get it out to the public, if we're going to do that.
The meeting for the public?
I'm a bit canceled in this.
Is that what we're talking about, for a special board?
Hey, Eric, Wayne, thank you very much for being able to help us out.
You're welcome.
Thank you all.
All right, we'll save our light for Monday.
What, 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 are we looking for a date for a special board meeting or the meeting to have with the public?
Yes.
I would think we want to do the meeting with the public first, and then we would need a special board meeting in order to do, for them to do what they need to do with OFCC.
So we could do that.
Oh, we can do that, the regular meeting, okay.
Now your meeting is from, we've worked that time with them, just when you want to do that.
And.
I said, obviously as a special meeting, if you as a board can interact, if there's a special meeting.
Right, yeah. Then we can't all four be, five be here.
Well, if it's before November ninth, I can't come anyway.
Well, we could have it that week. We could have it that, that week, that's still a week before the board meeting.
Yeah. Like, like Thursday the twelve? When it's Thursday the twelve?
Okay.
That work?
Yeah, that's fine.
So did you want to do like four to six or four to seven or?
I like the idea of four. Because, you know, maybe staff wants to come and that's kind of close to. When they get off work.
I mean, I personally think four to six would probably be, I would catch your people off of work, like five o'clock jobs. I'm not sure if we would need to go to seven, but if you want to, it doesn't hurt anything. I'm thinking let's, my first thought is let's say seven, cause sometimes that six o'clock, I know, I don't know how many people are actually working back at work. And, or whether people are in their communities, so this, for people that actually work at, at work someplace, six o'clock can be hard. Now, whether or not. That's the reality at this point, I don't know.
I'm fine with seven, I just want people to have options and feel like they've had a place in this.
Not a dust.
Yeah, where, do you want to try the cafeteria? We could do that, is that fine Jeff, high school cafeteria that set us up there?
I can, I can make it work, I was really poor, so if I usually use for things like, uh, bathrooms and stuff over there.
Do we need to make sure the high school cafeteria is available that evening? It'll be available. We can't, okay. So did you want, uh, when we shared this with the public, do you want, are we saying like come on the half hours, like if you're coming four, four thirty? I mean, it'd be hard if they're, if you're gonna share things or have any, I don't know what you're thinking, or you want this to be able to come and. I don't know how we, I don't know how we would share or present that, that's my only concern.
Unless we see, like, I gotta work and see if Eric can do it like, I mean, probably, is it on poster boards, a couple of examples?
Oh, yeah.
Those big ones to say, just here's ideas how it works. Here's an example, or if you want to do that tonight?
Yeah.
Or we could have a, somehow one wall, just a term stays here, it's up to you, I don't want to do that.
I think a poster board would be a good idea.
I'm thinking kind of just leave it loose, I can't imagine we're gonna get more than.
A ton of people.
Okay, that's fine.
I want a plan for the worst, but no.
I can't imagine we're gonna get a cafeteria full at a time, so I would think that we would be okay to just kind of leave it as open. Is that all, um. Okay, like sunshine rules, okay to just, cause we'll be just be in session that whole time?
I'll just go ahead and do the, yeah, cause we just put, the meeting starts seven, you adjourn when you adjourn.
Okay.
So we'll be bona fide special meeting.
Right.
Come in and talk. This special board meeting purposely being.
Perfect. Okay.
Be a community, meeting on basically, on, on basically demolish your task elementary, and build a new elementary or something to offend. And then we can figure out the wording, you know, we're trying to just have now, we can add something more than X amount of people at a time or something. And I just do a meeting notice tomorrow, the biggest thing is make sure you're available, if you're available, I'll send out the meeting notice tomorrow.
Okay, and then we'll put something out tomorrow as well, um, through our various communications. Yeah, gotta work. All right. So you don't, we don't need a motion on any of that at this point?
You don't have to, you can't want to be, you'll have to, I can call a special meeting, so.
Okay, all right. Okay. All right, how about the, let's see, we need, we're gonna need a motion on the locker room project, I believe, correct? Motion to award the construction contract for the athletic locker room to two K, uh, General Company.
So moved. Second.
All right, um, attached to the recommendation is a company that bid tagulation, we did have like seven different companies bid on it. So it was a good turnout. Uh, and then also tasks is a recommendation from Garth Miller. For two K to do the project and as well as, as three different alternates to kind of offset each other. You know, the basically, the base bid for two K was two point nine seven million dollars, the budget was two point nine million, so just slightly better. Um, the two alternates, the two or three alternates deal with a water line, so we're, you know, basically, they're still, they're trying to get. A variance of having to put a brand new water line from forty to new, I mean, from Watkins Road to a new athletic building. If, if they don't, we have a price of forty thousand dollars to do that, that does include tech fee, so it would be a tech fee on top of that. If we have to do that, um, original plan was to come off Watkins High School.
They were supposed to vote on that today and by the time I remembered the meeting was at nine, it was over. So I don't know.
Stop us looking at water, is there a board?
Yeah, we don't need, uh, we get the variance don't need that, we'll just push that to under Tennessee for the project.
Right, okay.
The other thing is pledge will service, right now the original plan wants to go to the existing Watkins. But actually if we combine with the services there for water, the soccer field, football field, and run a new height, it actually saves us forty thousand dollars.
Okay.
So it makes more sense just to go drag it, cause there is a timing, another kind of Watkins get shut down, or the athletic facility shut down. Or they have to keep temporary power, or if we go straight to Watkins Road, that's definitely gonna be an issue, so. The third one was like a windscreen that goes across the fencing, it's gonna be like a black fence, it was like four hundred dollars, someone says like Watkins more old. Maybe it wasn't a lot of money and should do something last for quite a long time. So the options, the total was two point nine, nine seven four fifty, so seven zero four fifty. So any questions on it, you know, everything?
Just two K, I don't know anything about them.
They did the actual demolition of the, of the task elementary.
Yeah.
And a lot of the work in this building to get all the stuff, they, they did a very good job.
Okay.
Actually kind of Madison came, two K to us.
Oh, okay.
And then Tom, the, uh, local rep for Garth Miller on the project, came for two K. They did a very good job, we were very impressed with them.
Garth Miller's worked with them prior as well?
Yes, and they, and they did, they went through and did basically. You know, basically went through their bid, make sure the couple of bid, make sure that they're good, and then Garth Miller felt very comfortable, so. You know, they're all pretty close, we had two point nine up to four million dollars, but we had two of two nine, three one, three one five, three one six.
And this includes new bleachers as well?
No, this is just a building itself.
This is just the building?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's about eight hundred dollars on the four bleachers, or that would be a, something they're still working, that won't start to mix.
We've already proved that though, huh?
We haven't, not the actual bid then.
Oh, but to do it.
Yeah, kind of do, yeah, we proved to move forward with it, we're gonna do it kind of like a design bid product, so. Um, it's actually their state term pricing for it, or their common person pricing for the one company, so as soon as we get quote or note. We've kind of seen the design of the bleachers, what it's generally look like, but this is strictly for the building itself, just as you said.
All right.
So any questions on it?
Any questions for Mr. Jones?
It's exciting, this money is being paid for the comp issuance that we did.
Right, from before, right?
Right.
For, you know, spring something.
All right, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spender?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. Motion passes. Um, how about, we can probably do C and D together? Policies for first and second readings? Need a motion for those?
Motion approval seven C, seven D.
Second.
Any questions on any of those policies?
Can I say two things?
Yeah, absolutely.
So on the, the first reading, just, um, so the board is aware, we came, uh, with this in August when Ohio High School had waived. Eligibility requirements, they waived them again for, um, the first nine weeks, this could be something ongoing all year, I'm not sure, so we'll just. Keep updating it and bringing it back to make sure the board's aware. So that's the first reading, and then also just to point out, um, I sent everybody an email as well, but regarding, um, policy G D P D. Um, the one that's on second reading, it's a staff discipline, uh, I just wanted to point out that. That does not supersede the bargaining unit for our, um, classified staff, but we do have classified staff that are not in. The team surgery union, therefore it also is applicable to that, them as well, and it's part of all the new Title IX requirements. So I just wanted to kind of update you, um, so you have that information.
Appreciate that, your email was very clear, thank you.
And appreciated that you took care of that.
Nothing malicious.
No, no, absolutely not, so that's it on the policies.
All right, any questions? Mr. Jones?
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mrs. Spender?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. That motion passes. All right, um, let's see. I guess we'll go ahead and do item E.
Okay, so this is me as well, um.
Yeah, we'll need a motion. We need a motion for, um, to approve the addendum to the course fees for the middle school and high school handbook, please.
So moved.
I'll second that.
No, you can't, okay, thanks. So we, um, initially when we put our re-students on remote, we kept our, all students K through twelve on the same fee schedule. Trying to keep their courses aligned, fees aligned, so to make transitions smoother when kids are coming and going to and from school, back in person and remote. Um, however, we're finding not in K through five, because our K through five kids learn using the same resources and tools that our in-person learners use in programs. But our six through twelve students are only using Amentum. So even if they're taking an art class on Amentum, they're not using the hands-on consumables that our in-person learners would use. And so we are, um, I'm recommending to alter the fee schedule for our remote students only six through twelve. So they would pay, um, a fifteen dollar fee per semester, um, in lieu of any and all other student fees, which will be for their consumable use of the program. That we pay for Amentum, no different than they currently pay for when they use other programs in schools, but it would definitely. Reduce the amount of fees those six through twelve graders are currently spending and probably some courses that they're not actually. Using that much consumable money, so that would be the recommendation to change that fee, if they do come back in person. Second semester, which obviously we know is a choice, then their fees would be prorated for the second half of the year, which is why we're saying fifteen a semester. So.
I actually have a question on this one.
Sure.
I had to read this like a couple of times, because the second, um, sentence confused me after reading the first one. So the students, I understand what it means, but I just feel like maybe there's a word missing, but, um. All six through twelve remote students will be charged a fifteen dollar et cetera, and then period, six through twelve. Remote students will not be charged additional fees. If that student comes back and they prorate, uh, for the consumables in an in-person environment, that, those are additional fees.
That means for when they're remote, so we can clarify that if.
So I just feel like, yeah, I just feel like, uh, it could open up something.
I get it, yeah.
Like, um, oh, you said in here, there are additional fees, but now there's, I mean, I know. Cause on the other hand, if a kid is in person and goes remote, maybe they're thinking that's where the prorated portion comes.
We can clean that up.
That's all.
I have a couple of questions as well, so overall, this would lower the fee?
Substantially.
Substantially, yeah.
For none of those students, so I guess my next question is why would there be a fee for online?
I mean, current, current students, um, pay part of their, like their, um, thirty dollar fee in K through five is to support. Um, programs that have annual renewals and other consumables, so, um, Amentum is attached with a cost, so that's why. We believe it should be attached to the fee.
Okay. I think that's it for now.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions? All right, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Spender?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
No.
All right, we have F, um, this is our public meeting on the reemployment of T. Michael Warrington. We don't need a motion, right, this is just notice of that?
I'm not calling you, might want to speak for or against retiring of him.
Okay.
So, yeah, if I can start, so Mike Warrington's a high school social studies teacher, I'm sure you're all well aware of who he is. Um, he's in his thirty-six year teaching in the district, um, he's at the point where he kind of has to retire, he's going to lose retirement. But he's not ready to leave education and we are definitely not ready to lose him, the board in support of that, he's. One they always hear when we get to do our student of the quarter, that they, students love him, his classroom's really engaging and. I think if he wants to continue teaching, I think we'd luck, be lucky to have him still, so I would, um, you know, I would hope you guys would feel the same way.
I do feel the same way, just saying, my son has him this year and absolutely loves him.
My daughter had him last year and I am, when I saw his retirement, before I got down to the next section, I was like, oh no, so.
It's hard to replace the Mike Warrington.
Yeah, I'm glad to see that this was, this is going on, so. All right.
That's that.
I'll see if I can help it once, but you're what's.
Anybody here want to speak for or against the? Okay, all right. All right, item G, insurance renewal, we need a motion to approve the renewal of the health and dental insurance with Medical Mutual of Ohio.
So moved.
Um, second.
It's always a good thing we get negative renewal, so.
Yeah.
You always look, you always worry about the second one, sometimes they buy your business in the second year of the year. Um, so basically, our insurance all turns out to market, we had several big, several companies quote. So Medical Mutual and our current carrier Anthem both came in last year. There's been some unhappiness with the current carrier, some, um, I myself experienced it, still there with it. Um, but, you know, we have insurance committee, man, before represents from the teachers union, and then four from the classified non-union. So we all went together and talked, uh, the one that really pushed Medical Mutual over was. Is they guaranteed no larger than a nine percent increase next year.
Oh.
So on top of giving us a three percent rebate, they guaranteed they won't increase no more than nine percent next year. We had the same thing last year with Anthem, but theirs was fifteen percent, and we got a fifteen percent. So, and I imagine with Medical Mutual, let's say we have a very good year, we get a nine percent again. But for this year, I had originally ten percent plus in the budgets, my budget every year was going to minus three, so the savings to the school district. Savings to the employees, as well as the dental was at minus six percent. Way of dealing with that, the board pays a flat thirty-five dollars, so every dime of savings goes back to the employee. So it's good for them, so the insurance committee, unanimous recommendation, asking the board to approve the switch from Anthem to Medical Mutual effective January first, two thousand twenty-one.
Any questions? All right, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mrs. Spender?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. All right, that motion passes. We have, uh, we need a motion to approve. The resolution opposing proposed development of residential projects in Etna Township.
So moved, second.
Any discussion?
Other than it's, in my personal opinion, it's sad that we've gotten to this point, but.
I think it's horrible that we've gotten to this point.
But unfortunately, it is necessary due to the circumstances that, um, we are under right now. So, you know, it is what it is, I hate having to vote for this in all honesty, but again. We didn't decide this.
We didn't have an opportunity to give input, and I think, again. We have to look out for the best interest of the district and the kids and the families of this district, and adding an additional three hundred and sixty-five homes. Regardless of what they call them, regardless of what they call them retirement home, there's no guarantee that they will be retirement homes. The reality is, is the different workshops that are, are different warehouses are. People are working for a thirty thousand dollar salary, so we can imagine that they're gonna need. A smaller home, but these, there's a good chance that they could be young families that are going into these smaller homes and starting their families and, and. It could really mess up our district and I think we have to look out for our district.
Not only the district, but I also, I look to our constituents and we are, we have a huge. List of constituents, I mean, it's not just Etna we have, we have Harrison, we have Pataskoala, we have St. Albans, we have into Fairfield County. So we have to look out for all of them and, you know, cause Etna's growing so large, everyone else has to. Chip into that piece of the pie, and I don't know that it's necessarily fair to ask them to pay for Etna's development. So, you know, and especially when they're doing this without even talking to us, so. It's a shame, but it is what it is.
Read.
Right?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spender?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes, that motion passes, and you will distribute that.
Yes, I'll make sure it's to Etna Township.
All right, graduation date for the twenty twenty-one school year.
I think you guys do have to have a motion, because it has to be amended to the calendar.
Oh, but we are actually going to make, we're gonna make a date, we need to amend.
Sorry, motion for seven I.
Second.
Alright.
Okay, so, um, I'm recommending, I think we're, we're at the point now where we're, um, gonna be headed into November, and I think we have to select a date for graduation, we have been unsuccessful, not for the lack of phone calls and emails and trying to secure an outside location for this current school year. We, um, and, and speaking with, um, Mr. Janelle, and, um, Mrs. Lotovitz, the principal, we, we can house this class in the gym, we'll be okay with the timeline of construction and when they have to get out of the building, um, and we do have a little shy of three hundred kids in this graduating class, however, next year we're at three sixty, so we are currently, um, pursuing, again, um, the same options we were looking at when the shutdown happened last spring, we're, we're finding a few speed bumps, a lot of people are hesitant to commit or book anything because of the current situation, so I'm hoping that, you know, maybe if we start to say, okay, never mind this year, we've moved on, we're gonna have a gym, but i- if we can have graduation in the gym, um, but for the, you know, for the two thousand twenty-two school year, we really need to find an outside location, so we're actively working on that, but at this time, I'm recommending that we, um, have hopefully in the high school gym, May twenty-second, ten AM, um, for this year's graduating class, so that would be the calendar amendment. Any questions or concerns, or?
Let's hope we have it.
I know, and we'll, obviously, I'll continue, we'll, we'll update the board as we go along, and.
I was gonna say, and this is of course based on.
Yes, pending.
Current pandemic situation on May twenty-second.
Yeah, that's, you know, we'll keep that date no matter what, we'll keep that time no matter what, but we'll cross our fingers and hope that the current situation allows us to have everyone together in the gym.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spender?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes, that motion passes, uh, we need a motion to authorize Dan Hayes to repair the practice field located west of the existing high school, uh, at no cost to this district. So moved.
Second.
Alright. Any questions on that, you all got information? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spender?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes, alright, that motion passes, need a motion for eight A, a motion to approve the E S C hearing impaired contact?
Motion approval eight A.
One second.
Alright, Mr. Jones?
You want any questions, or just you want to vote? She's gonna say total cost is fifty-two thousand, fifty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars.
Three cents. So, times three.
Times three. Fifty-seven each student.
Fifty-seven each student, and is that a, is that an outside pla- is that an outside place to be in, or is that a? Not coming to us? It is the S C of Annapolis. Okay.
Same students as last year.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Spender?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. That item passed. Item nine, treasures items, A through E, need a motion to approve one or all of those?
Motion on A through E.
I'll second that.
A is our annual, our permanent appropriations and estimates, receipts for the school year is probably getting the estimates together for the finances. This just sets the budget for each fund, um, you know, starting July first, two thousand twenty-one, uh, twenty. Uh, obviously, as, we may need to amend it throughout the year, but this gets us the initial to keep spending money, to keep payers down and so forth. Again, donations, we always appreciate those, uh, then, uh, save with purpose, again, as they come in, we bring it to the board, uh, then and now, again, timing issues, we got some related voices from a year ago, obviously, PO's not open, so we had to close them, so it was called then and now, the board approved. And then transfers, so transfers are usual, these are basically the current debts we have from, that's being paid for a permanent improvement fund, so that money is collected by a permanent improvement in that fund, but we have transferred debt service to actually pay the debt. The other one, the other one on there is the F mill maintenance that we have to every year for permanent improvement two fund O thirty-four, uh, which basically is classroom maintenance, we gotta make that payment for twenty-three years, and that money sets there to help repair the new buildings we're building in Annapolis. Last one is our PI Tennessee, we've been doing this for three years, continues, take you about a half minute out, the money we get from the Gen Zs, the Gen, and transfer it into a PI Tennessee fund to be used for different construction projects. It's important about this, and we're gonna need it. Just, and it's gonna talk to OFCC, I'll mention real quick, Annapolis G M P is coming in, it's about two hundred and thirty thousand over the budget. So we're gonna have to put in about another two hundred and thirty thousand, school transfer, and that doesn't include any of the alternates. So if we want alternates, we have to put more money in, so that's something that will be brought to the board next month. Uh, right now, there's about five hundred and sixty-seven thousand setting in that PI Tennessee, that's great, it's about a million dollars. And then we have about a million dollars in interest from our L F I local share, so we have the money to cover, really, Annapolis is the last one we have to cover locally, because we have two millions for high school, and then comps, we're gonna have two million for Kirkersville, additional comps issuance, and we're gonna have either two or twelve for Potasko. So this is the one, last one left, and we need to cover with the money we have, and if we had the money to do that. Definitely to cover the overage, but if we want to do alternates, that's something we're definitely gonna see, there are some in there that we may want to do. Again, we'll discuss that next month, once, you know, the G M P is finalized tomorrow, and the alternates is finalized, as soon as I get the documents we get to look at, and that we asked to approve that for an elementary. That's all I have, anybody have any questions on any of those?
Okay, any questions? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Spender?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
That motion passes, superintendent items.
Okay, so two things I wanted to, um, discuss tonight was, the first one, neighborhood schools, so we are, um, we have started the process of re-districting um, back into neighborhood schools for the three elementaries, um, we, we have received our first set of plans from Transfinder, the company that's working with us. Um, we actually have a call tomorrow to kind of go over those plans and look at the various options. Um, a- as I stated before, we will be going back to neighborhood schools in the fall, so I would like to get communication out to our community, um, you know, at, sometime in the winter at the latest to let, let them know and start preparing for, um, where their children will go to school next year. Being mindful that, um, all Annapolis elementary students will be split between Kirk and Pat for the first half of the year, before they transition back, um, while the rebuilding is occurring in December, so half those kids will spend their time at Kirk, and the other half will spend their time at Potasko. So I kinda wanted to, you know, let you know where we're at, um, what we're working on, once we, um, have the call tomorrow and kind of start, um, you know, talking with the company and looking at our options, we'll finalize some things, and then I'll share back out with the board, um, the recommendation, and, and we can take a look at that, um, together and talk about it then. So, are there any questions on that, or just kind of wanted to update you what we're working on, what's going on? Okay, and then, um, I just wanted to give an update on our current situation with, um, COVID, so we've had five cases of COVID in the districts and school has started. Um, our, our staff continues to do a amazing job and be very vigilant with their cleaning protocols, safety measures that are in place, um. We, we reminded parents last week, and will continue to remind them that going remote is always an option, at any time, a, a child can choose to go from in-person to remote learning, um, I, I am concerned as well as the health department, as the winter months ramp up, we're going to see an increase in COVID cases, which means inevitably, we're going to see an increase in how many students are quarantined. Um, you know, we've, we've taken some phone calls and some emails, where people have asked, like, at, at what point would, would you all go remote? You know, we're not even close to being there right now, um, last week, for our southwest looking population, we had fifteen out of the twenty-five thousand that had COVID, so we're still very, very, very low with our numbers, that's not to say it couldn't change. Um, you know, we continue to meet with health department weekly, to look at our numbers weekly, and we'll continue to monitor that, um, throughout the winter, and if we get to that place where we think, you know, we need to go remote because of the amount of cases and kids quarantining, you know, then we'll, we'll talk about that at that time. So, I just kind of wanted to give you an update on where we're at with that as well. So I think it's overall very positive, how well we're doing with in-person learning. Any questions for me on either topic?
Any questions?
Okay.
Alright, request to speak on non-agenda items. Mr. Ford? You'll, um, can you use the microphone if you'll give your name and address, and then Mr. Jones will, uh, be keeping time, he'll give you five minutes, and he'll give you a warning when there's one minute.
Good evening, my name is Corey Ford, and I reside at seventy-one Osborne Drive here in Potasko. I'd like to thank the members of the board for allowing me to speak this evening, uh, in watching this meeting, I do appreciate that I've seen some people looking out and taking care of the community, and I sincerely appreciate that. Keeping that said, I wrote this angrily, uh, and, and some of my anger may have been misplaced, so please forgive me for some of the words I used, um, I'll open us. Tonight I'll be talking about transparency and public participation. You'll have to forgive me, I'm a Marine for nearly a decade, and I don't like commensurate words. I make this brief because I know I can be allowed to handle it once, and this will provide you time to let my words marinate. I prepared for this evening by sending a PowerPoint presentation to the treasurer, show clear examples of how the community is being underrepresented in these meetings. Given the topic of conversation, I was apoplectic when the treasurer informed me that my meeting would not be shared with the community, so that I could follow on. He wrote, and I quote, "Your request to speak was with the Board of Education, not the community." I can't find a good reason why the community would need to be kept out of information. I wondered to myself, why isn't the school staff coming in here with their charts, graphs, slides, videos, but the community members can't? How does this keep with the board's policy to quote, "Recognize the value to school governance and policy comments on educational issues, and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves in school matters of community interest?" I don't think it does. The treasurer, treasurer notifies more new sources of what's going on here, the Potasko Post, it publishes the same information week after week. It published the wrong date for this meeting. No correction was printed. The Potasko Standard hasn't published any meeting details in its sections at all. The Newark Advocate neither has, has it either. I have several copies of all those newspapers in my briefcase back there, if anybody wants to look at them. The WARC site, WARC website hasn't informed the community about closed meetings, and neither has the Marquee. The youtube.com channel comments are turned off on your archive videos. It appears you don't want community feedback there either. There seems to be no simple and clear way of the community interacting, interacting with the board, aside from you ignoring us if we come up here. The same way that Ms. Lyles was ignored last month. The Ohio School Board Association states the purpose of the school board is, and I quote, "A school board sets educational goals and establishes policy for the school system based upon state law and community values." Law and community values are not rubber standing the wishes and desires of unalike the school staff. I'll close with these thoughts, how do you expect to know what community values are when you seem to be doing everything in your power to keep the meeting out? I was told not just criticize, but also construct the suggestions. Start updating the website with relevant information to these meetings, please. Publish corrections in the local papers when the meeting details change. Turn on the comments in the YouTube section so you know what people are thinking. If they're inappropriate, you can delete them. Provide the same opportunities to the community as the school staff, to come in here and influence policy, and remember who elected you in the first place. Your constituents will hear your answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got requests to speak on non-agenda, Teamsters Local four thirteen. Southwest Looking Education Association. And we need a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Spender?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes, we are adjourned at eight twenty-six.